Welcome.
We first would like to give thanks for waking up this morning, this beautiful morning that you have guaranteed to us. We want to give thanks for safe travel that allowed us to get here. We want to give thanks for being closing our right minds, able to focus on the needs of the Wayne County citizens. We pray for the safety of our military, our first responders, and all those who watch out for us while we slumber in sleep. Dear God, we ask for safety and give thanks for all our governmental leaders, our families. And finally, we want to give thanks for the opportunity to share our blessings around the world. Thanks. We ask in our Lord and Savior Jesus Christ. Amen.
Mr. Chair.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I trust everybody's had an opportunity to read the minutes. Are there any corrections to the minutes?
Some were.
Okay, he's going to make a motion. So, if there's a paper, please raise your hand. Okay, moving on. Just to agenda, Mr. Wood.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, we have three changes to the agenda. Number one, I'd like you to delete the first item under unfinished business about the Dunn and Dalton architectural contract. Craig and I are still finishing up the details on that, so it's not quite ready to go. I do plan on having that at your next meeting. Number two is we'd like to, under unfinished business, add a motion to authorize the chairman and clerk to the board and other administrative officials if required to execute the CDBG-DR grant agreement, funding approval, signatory form and certification cards, the performance-based contract, the electronic payment form, and any other documents required by the North Carolina Emergency Management Division pertaining to this grant, subject to final review by the county attorney. We're adding this because we got it in late last week. We've just now finished reviewing it, but we need to move forward on that as quickly as possible. It is a state-form contract. They're doing the same contract with all four counties that are participating in the CDBG-DR. That's the disaster recovery CDBG grant for about six months we're giving. That's 2/3 of the 25 million. They're doing a two-year contract for them. So, we'd like to add, when the time comes, happy to reread that motion, because I know it's rather lengthy. And then the third one is what we'd like to do is add a presentation by Dr. Dunsmore, and I'll have a little part in that as well, to address the K-3 pupil teacher mandated reduction in fiscal year 2019. And Dr. Dunsmore and Dr. David Lewis are here, and we've been working with them on this.
Is that our new business?
Both of those. I was going to put both of those under unfinished business, because we've been working on both of them.
So, K-3 would be two under that?
Yeah, so it'd be two under unfinished business if y'all are in agreement. Okay? And so those-
Hold that for a minute. Huh? Yeah, copy yourself, if you've got it on. Good idea. Thought you'd be coming up and talking to her, but come in.
On the chat room?
Yeah. That's why I opened it up.
Good morning, gentlemen. I'm here on behalf of this city to discuss the economic development, historic preservation, and urban redevelopment project participation. A company is interested in investing in downtown. The scope of the project consists of six historic buildings that are currently vacant and in need of significant rehabilitation to make them productive once again. The project will effectively utilize every floor of each of the buildings and develop multiple mixed-use properties that will result in at least 55 market-rate apartments. Actually, the actual plan is to create 57 units or 68 bedrooms with a mix of studio, one-bedroom, two-bedroom, and some extended-stay options that will range in rent from $695 per month to $1,700 per month, depending on square footage and use. It will also reproduce over 12,000 square feet of commercial space, ready-to-lease space affecting total of over 68,000 square feet. Actual projected total is 68,691. The total project investment is estimated to be nearly $11 million. The project's scope consists of the following properties: 200 East Walnut Street, 204 East Walnut Street, Walnut Street, and West Street. The company is highly reputable and qualified in the field of historic rehabilitations for reuse, and has conducted similar projects in multiple states and North Carolina cities. Currently, these six properties contribute just $3,784 to the local tax revenues per year, including city, county, and the municipal service tax district. Due to the current state of these buildings, their historic value to our community, the economic impact a 100% rehabilitation of their built space would create, and the projected increase in city and county property tax revenues, the city and county are considering a partnership with the company to secure the private investment. With this interest, the city and county have negotiated draft agreements that identify incentives to allow these processes, to protect the public's interest in the project. A copy of the draft agreements were attached, and you have reviewed them. The incentives, I'm going to highlight them for the public's benefit. The city will provide a $300,000 loan to the developer to apply toward the building's historic exterior facade improvements in return for the $10.7 million project investment and the expected $7.9 million worth of direct building improvement investments. This loan will be performance-based and only provided after certain developer benchmarks are achieved, such as approved building plans and permitting for the first $100,000, a 50% substantial completion of rehabilitations for the second $100,000, and issuance of a certificate of occupancy for all six of the properties will issue the final $100,000. This will be a forgivable loan after a 10-year period once the required performances specified in the agreement are met. The city and county will provide an ad verum property tax-based value performance grant to the developer for a period of 10 years at varying levels over the period, beginning with a value equivalent to 90% of value for the first five years, 75% for the year six, 60% for year seven, 45% for year eight, 30% for year nine, 15% for year 10, and 0% after. Even with the grant and throughout the grant period, the revenues to the local municipalities will be greater than what the properties currently generate. The anticipated total amount to be awarded to the developer over the 10-year period will not exceed $310,314. It is estimated that the city and county will receive $73,938 and $75,400 specs will not be sold, $50, returned to the low be no less than $54,200 for the tax revenues. In summary, the city and county will receive an estimated $200,000 over what properties currently pay in property tax over the 10-year period.
If we want more than any other shit, the public come out of here. I don't have time to comment.
Good morning, gentlemen. I am architect and design executive. I work in the area of cities. The company they've done, to kind of the city of worse, Danville, 2000, started in the middle of 2000, and rehab, I didn't completely recreate on the first, others to do. So, this is because not only did I end it, but they needed to sit in Greenville, Anderson, Essendon, Small City, Montano, Texas, it's been absolutely, although, to hear the art there. And there are some built to do, that's what the building looked, but it not returned for.
Thank you. Ma'am. Ma'am.
Yeah, yeah.
Mr. Gurley has a question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I was just going to ask you, what part, I hear you write, say they had worked in Kinston.
I haven't worked in Kinston.
But the company has.
Yes.
What facility down there today?
They redid a large hotel in Kinston.
Okay.
And I don't know if there was other projects, but I do specifically know about that project.
Okay, thank you.
Questions, pose in the entity, though there, with the new development, the raised monies, the redevelopment, those people who already have homes, are via any funding to assist them so that they can add his buildings? Because, of course, with the price and expenses, there was not due area, and how will this assist them? Also, there was some night, I do accompany, on a year to the center, them this guy, like, tonight, or some low contract, that with all in a way, had, oh, regular development, in the ass council, immunity, how, and money, citizens have lived, when my is, have defined six. So, thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Is there anyone else?
Good morning.
Come on.
I'm Gretchen Reed. I live in town, and I also happen to be the chair of the Travel and Tourism Board here currently. And this has tourism implications, too, in fact, that anytime you create a better space in our downtown area, we have easier time convincing people to come have their events here, which brings in money to our community. The people come in, they spend money, but they do not deplete our services any. It's just a positive for the community, and I think it's a very good thing. Anytime you can get $10 million for only an investment of $300,000, that's pretty no-brainer to me. Thank you.
Thank you, Gretchen. Anybody else? Okay, I'm going to close the public comment session, and then I'm going to go where I'm supposed to be at, which is the public hearing for the economic development, historical preservation, urban, and I'll ask, you come on back up if you would. It's open. We're back on track.
Hello again. Just to be clear, to follow up the ladies' comments, the county is not being asked to give a $300,000 forgivable loan. The city is doing that. The county is not part of that agreement as part of the 10-year grant based on the tax value increase. So, I'll pick up where I left off. Expectations and assurances. The agreements will assure the following. The company shall spend no less than $7.9 million on real property improvement subject to ad verum property tax of the six buildings. Company must repair, rehabilitate, open, and operate the project as a mixed-use project, including at least 55 market-rate apartment units, and the creation of at least 12,000 square feet of commercial space affecting at least 68,000 square feet of historic built space. The improved buildings shall be completed in accordance with the Department of Interior Standards for Historic Preservation, which will assure its high quality. The improved buildings shall be completed also in accordance to Local Land Use Planning and Development Regulations. In return for the public investment, the city will have a lien on the properties in the form of a promissory note and a deed of trust. Release and termination from the promissory note and deed of trust will occur 10 years after the final loan grant payment is made, and the assurances and expectations have been met as stipulated in the agreements. Company will provide historic property easements to the city to assure the investment and the company's historic treatment to the properties. In addition, the city is negotiating in cooperation with the county rights to a portion of the roof at 139 West Walnut Street to allow a wireless antenna access in return for the public's investment to the community's benefit. There are recapture clauses as well in the agreements, such as if company is at any time not current on taxes, fees, assessments, or other amounts owed to the city or county, the city and county will not be required to continue grant payments. The timeline for which will require the rehabilitation work to be completed is subject to the execution of the agreement, but will be limited to a 24-month period anticipated to be completed by April 2020 at this time. If company ceases to operate facilities at any time within the 10-year period, a recapture of the grants is owed back to the city and the county based on the time this occurs within the 10-year period. The economic impacts of historic preservation and reinvestment of these buildings will be broad, significant, and in accordance with the adopted vision of the 2017 Downtown Master Plan. Beyond the tax revenues, it is expected that the creation of 55-plus market-rate apartments will contribute approximately $612,000 annually to downtown businesses through sales revenues based on North Carolina economic indicators. The creation of over 12,000 square feet of available rehabilitated commercial space will attract additional small businesses and create or retain jobs. The complete rehabilitation of six historic properties that have lacked reinvestment for decades and require significant construction to secure their future as part of our historic-built stock is unquantifiable. Outstanding items such as continuation of the federal historic preservation tax credits, the ability of the company to secure a financial lender, and other outstanding steps may impact the ability to move this project forward, notwithstanding the subject agreements and local incentives. But this was the first step that was necessary to go forward with the other steps that the developer must take. So, that is the project, as shared with the city council last night. Usually, I'd make a recommendation on behalf of staff, but I am not your staff. It is just on behalf of the city and myself, as the downtown development director, I would be very grateful for your motion and acceptance of allowing the chairman to sign the agreements to your city and county attorney's review approval, and based on the intent, expectations, and assurances as stated herein and intended. Any questions for me?
Questions, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I would just want to want you to maybe add, clarify a couple of comments, or, there was one reference made to what the overall cost of the apartments would be for rental. And the other one was, the young lady from tourism spoke about what positive effect it would have on tourism. I sort of always thought of tourists as coming and checking into the regular hotels, and I understood this to be apartments that would be more continuous. So, two things. What would the average cost be for those type of apartments to put in, and would tourists have some access to those, and on what conditions? I'm a little bit-
Right now, the plan for the apartments, there's 57 of them, and they're going to range in square footage from a very small, like, studio apartment of a little less than 500 square feet, and then there are going to be some that range that are two-bedroom units that are going to, rent rates are going to be about $1,200 plus. There are going to be several, a handful of, as of now, planned extended-stay apartments, executive suites that are fully furnished, in partnership with several of our major employer organizations that have expressed a need and an interest to have spaces to be able to have people that they're recruiting or that are visiting to have an option for a nice place to stay that's furnished. But there's just going to be a handful of those. So, as far as tourists, I don't know exactly what Gretchen was-
I can answer that.
It's not going to be a hotel, or it's not going to be set up like that. I think she was just saying it's going to benefit the overall impact to the tourist economy. But the units there themselves are going to be a handful extended-stay versions for executive people that are visiting for an extended stay in the community, such as the hospital when they're recruiting doctors and looking for things like that. So, just a handful of those, and those will be the more expensive versions, because they'll be fully furnished, and they'll be renting them in large blocks a ton. But again, the rent rates will be at market rate. Right now, the market rate for downtown apartments is, on average, $925 a unit. So, it'll be in line with that, but it will be based on the square footage of the spaces offered. Does that answer your question?
Thank you, ma'am.
Other questions? And just for clarification, the $300,000 is coming from the city, not the county.
Exactly.
But I'd love you to understand that.
We just lumped in two agreements. We have two agreements. We have one just between the city and the developer for the $300,000, which is the forgivable loan that I mentioned, and the other agreement is between the city, the county, and the developer, and that is to stipulate the terms for the property tax-based value grant that will be over the 10-year period.
Mr. Chairman. Yes, sir.
Just for clarification, on the county side, it's just really a reduction in property taxes. So, with that investment that they are going to be making, we are agreeing not to charge the full or collect the full tax, or, we actually, we are collecting it, we're rebating it back.
If I may respond, you don't have the authority, you don't, you're not refunding.
Okay, what are we doing?
You're giving them a grant, but it's based on taxes that they have already paid you.
Okay.
And it's like you do, it's an incentive, it's a type of incentive you would do for an industry, and you have those situations that you, they have to pay the tax before you give them the grant. And the grant is always less than the full amount of taxes that they have paid. By redeveloping these four, six properties, the values are going to increase, even though that they will get a tax break, because they're in the historic district and are historic properties, you will still ultimately get more taxes over the short term and even more over the long term.
The main thing is, we're not having any out-of-pocket expenses.
That is absolutely correct. And the thing that Julie said is very important. The county is not loaning them any money at all.
Correct.
So, if they don't pay you, they don't get anything from you. And the other thing about the antenna, the tower, that's going to be as part of the deal. The county has been very clear that you want to be able to have that. One, you, last week, last meeting, you passed something for broadband to come to Seven Springs, to the project, and to downtown Goldsboro. That antenna would be up there. And more important, in my opinion, since I don't use Wi-Fi, you're going to be able on that tower to put something that you would need for 911, if you needed that. The county would have the ability to do that at no cost to the taxpayers. And that's going to be part of the agreement that the county attorney approves before I give it to the chairman to sign.
Thanks for your explanation.
Mr. Chairman, if we could, let me call your attention to that chart that's up on the board. This goes to Joe's question. What we did here, this is the break-even point on the county property taxes. You'll see the first five years, the current taxes are in the second column, that's the $1,523. The next one is what it would be with the incentive. We would still clear 23, 22, I mean, I'm sorry, we would, that's after the incentives were given. So, you see, we're still $798.92 to the good. That goes to Joe's point about we're never paying out more than we took in in the taxes. After those five years, year six, it goes down from 90 to 75%. So, we take in 58, 30, and now we're 4,307 to the good, and it just increases each year thereafter. After year 10, you'll see in year 11, you're up to getting the full amount of taxes, which is $23,222 on buildings that right now you're only getting $1,523 on. And that's the real payoff here, is that we are increasing the tax base. And you'll see that between year 14 and 15 is the break-even point, because when you calculate what we would have paid out to them, it's $156,751.89. So, somewhere between year 14 and 15 is where we break even, and from that point on, you're taking in $21,700 more every year than you were taking in before.
And that's just assuming the tax rate doesn't change, and the value doesn't change at baseline this year.
Yeah, and it assumes a $7 million value. They pay taxes on half of that, because the historic tax credit cuts that automatically in 50 to 50%. So, that's what this is predicated on. And as Julie said, since she's not the county staff, I'll go ahead and say, we're recommending, on staff, that you approve this as well. And I wanted to go over the dollar figures with you. But you're absolutely correct, Joe. We never pay out more than we've taken in in that year.
Council, will we, can we take action on that today?
When you close the public hearing, if nobody else wants to speak.
Yeah, I'm going to allow, but I was-
Yes, sir, you can.
Okay, all right. Anyone else care to speak on this issue?
Would you like me to expound on this?
Sure, come on.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
What I was referring to is, most of the events we do, we found we've had really good luck with sporting events. There's a bidding process you have to go, and these people, they come in for their, say, a sporting event or whatever, kind of tourism events, and they always want to know what else is there to do in town. So, anytime you have a solid core of town, in a good-looking town, lots of retail, then that helps attract these people to look at Goldsboro, and Wayne County is a good place to come have their event, because it gives something for their, the people that are not participating in the specific event, something to do. And so, therefore, and you've got more retail space, it stands to reason, we look even better to these people.
Well, and the reason that I wanted you to, and thank you for adding on to this, because a lot of our constituents have come back for family reunions and alumni associations and all that. And I would want your organization to make it very clear that, number one, they're welcome. Number two, you appreciate the economic impact that they bring in. And number three is that they have available opportunities for them to have nice places to stay.
We try to do that, very much so. And we also have a lot of people, a lot of people don't know this, that come in for big family reunions or big church stuff. They actually contact the tourism office, and I think a lot of times we come up with, we do goodie-bags for them. They have different things in them.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Anyone else?
Would I be permitted to?
Sure.
I just don't want this to be misconstrued, as though I am objecting this new, you know, input. My only concern are those constituents that are in the community, and how it's going to affect their property. And the only reason why I brought this up to you all is because it was told last night that the decision had to be made from the council, from the city council last night, so that you all would be able to decide what you were going to do. So, I probably would have liked to, you know, understood it a little bit more. I'm still concerned about how it is going to affect those persons living in those communities. And will the city or the council, the commissioners, try to come up with any funding to assist these people who live next door to these historical buildings that you're going to be upgrading? Will you be assisting them with any grants or monies, or if you will consider any grants or monies to help these people who've been living in these communities all of their lives? That's my only input. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, I'm going to close that public hearing, and Mr. Baker?
Mr. Chairman, I move to authorize the chairman to sign the documents among the city and county, the city of Goldsboro, and the proposed developer of certain properties in the downtown area of Goldsboro, subject to the approval of the county and city attorney, so long as there is a tower allowed on the building on the northeast corner of Walnut Street and James Street, the old Walco B. Bank building, to be owned, be owned by the, to be owned by the city of Goldsboro, and can be used by the contractors to provide a tower, Wi-Fi tower, in the downtown area of Goldsboro without cost, and used by the Wayne County for such public needs as, without cost, also.
We have a motion on the floors, any discussion? If there's a paper, please raise your hand. Thank you. Moving on to the second public hearing, this is to receive public comments on the leasing space of the Wayne Executive Jetport.
Mr. Chairman, let me give you a little background on this. I've got a memo in your packet on page 14. I'll just go through that briefly. As you know, we've previously been awarded a 90% North Carolina Division of Aviation grant to engineer the roads, waterline, taxi lanes, and other connections to the airport runway, and the preparation of four lots for 100 by 100 corporate hangars. This has been identified as a critical need at the jetport, particularly since our last corporate hangar was leased to UNC Healthcare for the Medevac helicopter base there. The North Carolina Division of Aviation has been awarded additional construction funding and is finalizing their criteria for awarding those funds. We already have made a presentation to their staff in June requesting a 90% construction grant for this project. If we get it, the 10% match will come from the Eastern Region funds that you have previously earmarked for the jetport. Unfortunately, we may not get a decision on this grant until February of 2018. Meanwhile, we have a corporate client at the jetport, Mill to ATP, that wants to expand its operations to include two of the four proposed hangar spaces. He is proposing to build his own hangar, so the county would be entering into a ground- Meanwhile, we have a corporate client at the jetport, Milto ATP, that wants to expand its operations to include two of the four proposed hangar spaces. He is proposing to build his own hangar so the county would be entering into a ground lease with him. His business is training military and other pilots for a transition to commercial airline pilots with all of the necessary certifications. His business needs to expand as soon as possible. We have explained our situation of waiting on approval of the construction grant, but assured him we could go ahead with the lease negotiation and approval contingent on that grant. I've enclosed a sheet from the company that explains their operation and the economic impact and expansion would have on the community and the jetport. Next is a diagram showing how, uh, he would utilize a 100 by 100 hangar. Actual use may vary, but as you can see, he needs to house a number of new planes. The next sheet is the jetport's Transportation Improvement Program project list that the jetport advisory board approved and submitted to the North Carolina Department of Transportation, Division of Aviation for inclusion in their state transportation improvement plan. Please note that the second project is this corporate hangar expansion project for $2,670,000. The next sheet shows a survey of nearby airports' hangar and ground lease rates, and we have discussed with Milto ATP using a rate comparable to that of Johnston County Airport for a ground lease. Craig and I believe that this represents an excellent opportunity to assist one of our existing businesses at the jetport while also generating additional property taxes and fuel sales profits to offset the cost of jetport operations. Both the hangars and the additional planes would be subject to Wayne County property taxes. We recommend that you approve the leasing of the two corporate hangar ground parcels that are circled on the attached map of the expansion project, subject to the county receiving the North Carolina Division of Aviation Construction Grant for 90 percent of the cost as noted above. And Carol, if you could scroll down, please, to that map of the runway area. Uh, you see the two that I've circled in red ink and the two that are on top of each other on the far right side where the blue runway additions are. What the blue, what the blue ink shows is what we've got to construct. That's the construction grant. And then those, uh, four boxes with X's in them are the 100 by 100, uh, hangars. And, uh, those are the lots that you would be preparing so that someone could come in and, and, uh, build a hangar on a ground lease, uh, from us. So that's the improvement project that's been engineered. What you don't see on there is that coming over from where, uh, where the airport road comes in is we would have a 10-inch waterline associated with that project. Uh, that's because you've got to have that for a, uh, fire, firefighting line for the hangars. So the $2.67 million project would install all of that. Uh, again, we hope to get a determination on that in February. We think this is an excellent, um, opportunity, both for the company and also for the airport to expand its operations. And so we're recommending, uh, approval to authorize board and I to negotiate a, a contract, uh, with Mr. Kreske. And he is here today, if you have any questions, of him.
Okay. Other questions? Anyone for the public to speak? All right, by hearing that, I'll close the public.
Here?
And, um...
We're doing a motion.
I was getting ready to say, I'm looking at you. Said you are wrong that, that before.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, this, we're excited about, um, this potential and what's already taken place by, by Chris Kreske. I make a motion that, uh, we, um, enter into, uh, let me get my things straight. How do we need to word this?
I would just say on the last sentence, um...
Yeah.
It would be a, uh, motion...
Motion to...
To approve, uh, the leasing of the two corporate hangar ground parcels that are circled on the attached map...
Yeah.
Uh, subject to us getting that, um, NC Division of Aviation Construction Grant.
Okay, that's the motion I make.
Elegantly said. Motion on the floor, any discussion?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Uh, I think this would be, I mean, this is a necessity that Wayne County needs. Uh, when I came on this board, I didn't understand airports. And I'm still not a, an authority on it by no means. But I did not realize what the impact of an airport is for the county, for bringing in industry, uh, bringing in tax revenue, uh, and, you know, we have so many departments in the county that, that we have to fund that, uh, they're not self-sufficient. They don't, they don't generate enough money to even operate. Uh, this is an exception. Our airport is actually making money. And with, and with expansions like this, we'll be able to, you know, collect even more taxes and all. But, uh, you know, for the average citizen that does not understand airports, this is a win-win for Wayne County. Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
Just one comment, uh, about the funding. Of course, you know, you don't ever count your chickens to the hat, so, or you get a check in the mail or a certified check. But one of the, one of the, uh, really encouraging things about our funding with, uh, the Division of Aviation is that we just got a, we just got a reply last week that, uh, they're using, you know, they're coming up with formulas in order to, uh, make sure that the funding that's available, uh, goes to the source. They got to have, uh, they got to have rules and regulations. And this is the interesting thing, is that the presentation that Wayne County made back in June to, uh, the Department of Aviation, they are using our project as a guideline to set these standards by that they're going to be using to allocate these monies. That is a really, really good, encouraging thought. Like I said, we don't have the money yet, but in order to be used as a guinea pig, if you will, and use our project as a guideline to establish these, uh, rules and regulations that they're going to use, is really encouraging. So I just want to share that with the board.
Anybody else? So we do have a motion on the floor, only...
Yeah.
I kept you stairs. Any more discussion? All right. I pause the paper, please raise your right hand. Thank you. Let's move on. Former committee.
Okay. Former committee members this morning, we'd like to recommend the appointment of Suzanne Chrissy Lewis to the Wayne County Animal Control Advisory Committee. Mr. Chairman, I'd put this forward motion.
May I have a motion on the floor, any discussion? I pause the paper, please raise your right hand. Thank you.
That's it.
Okay. Let's move on to unfinished business, and I'll turn it over to you.
Uh, on the unfinished business, we have, uh, the two additions that we did. The first is the CDBG contract. Uh, I have not given, given you copies of this. It's pretty voluminous. That's all of this. So I did wade through it last night. It appears to be in order, but my recommendation to you would be is to, um, make a motion to, um, authorize the chairman and clerk to the board and other administrative officials, if required, to execute the CDBG DR grant agreement, funding agreement, funding approval agreement, signatory form and certification cards, the performance-based contract, the electronic payment form, and any other documents required by NC Emergency Management Division pertaining to this grant, subject to final review by the county attorney. I put that phrase in or anything else because this thing is kind of being done on the fly. And I have no doubt that sometime in the next two to three weeks, they're going to send us another form. So I wanted to go ahead and just give us a blanket agreement to sign all this stuff dealing with this CDBG grant.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I move adoption.
Okay. Got a motion on the floor, any discussion? And they'll, it just, for my part, there'll be an intake at the Veterans Service offices.
Yes. Uh, what we're going to do today is, as you know, the governor's coming to town, and what he's going to do is have a press conference at the Veterans Office. Uh, we were asked last week to, uh, provide space, and the state would hire the intake folks on this CDBG grant, which is actually a good help to us because then we don't have to provide that manpower. Um, so they've gone out and hired a contractor who's going to do all of that in all four places. Uh, Mel and I met and discussed, and he had talked to Chip as well about what would be the best location we could provide. Uh, they're probably going to have eight to 10, uh, intake folks there, so we needed a place that had the data ports and, uh, everything for computers. And what we decided on the best space available would really be that conference room in the Veterans Office. And it also has enclosed glass, as y'all know, so there'd be some confidentiality there. It also, if you don't remember, has doors at either end, so you could have a situation where you bring people in, have a small waiting area there with partitions, then they'll call them in, they'll do their business, and go out the other door. Uh, the other thing that would do is separate them from the veterans who are coming in, you know, for normal appointments with the Veterans Office. So it's really a very good setup. Uh, when the state contractor came in, he was extremely pleased with that, uh, arrangement in the Veterans Office. Uh, the only negative down there, as we all know, is parking, but we're going to ask some of the staff to park, uh, on the street and try to provide as many spaces as possible there.
And we've made arrangements for any veterans meetings that take place there.
Yes, there were, uh, and they made it clear that they could work around our schedule. So I checked with Brenda DeBose, and there were four, uh, meetings scheduled. And I submitted those and said, please add this to the dates that we're going to be closed, because they wanted to know if you had any holidays too. And this is going to be, uh, through December, December 1 through January 15. So we had already given them the holidays we're going to be closed, and I requested that they add those four to that. And some of these are only a two-hour, uh, window that the meeting will be. And I've already gotten a reply back, said that that would be no problem.
Yeah, I just wanted to be sure.
So they agreed to that.
I just...
And I've carbon Brenda on that, so she's aware she can continue with those meetings.
Yeah.
So I think we're ready to go. Uh, we have a good location, and, uh, we're glad to see this thing, um, getting off the ground now. But a lot of that was also why we needed to do the CDBG DR agreement, because you need to have that in place, because that's what we're going to be doing, is taking intake enrollment on that.
Okay. Any other discussion? All right. We've got a motion on the floor. Um, everybody raise your right hand if you're going to agree. Thank you. Moving on to our K3 presentation.
Yeah, what, uh, what I'd like to do now is, uh, I asked y'all to add this to the agenda. Uh, Craig and I have been working with Dr. Dunsmore and Dr. David Lewis, uh, from the school system, uh, talking about what we're facing on the state's current mandate for K through three pupil teacher, uh, reductions. And, uh, also, uh, we want to talk a little bit when they're through there about the low-wealth formula situation as well. So Mike?
Good morning, gentlemen. Thank you for having us. Um, we're here just to go over, many of you have probably read in the newspaper, the state of North Carolina is mandating class sizes in kindergarten through third grade. And we're here to present the implications that's going to have on our buildings and ability to educate our children and primarily just the impact on our capital plans as we move forward. Now let Dr. Lewis go over the specifics on those numbers.
Uh, good morning. Prior to the 2017-18 school year, uh, classroom teachers at the state level were funded at a rate of one teacher for every 18 kindergarten students, one teacher for every 16 first-grade students, and one teacher for every 17 second- and third-grade student. In the past, prior to this school year, districts across North Carolina have been allowed to have class-size averages in those grades of 21 students with no more than 24 students per class so that the additional classroom teachers in that funding formula could be used to provide things like art and music and physical education. Okay? This year's year one of a classroom reduction, or class-size reduction mandate coming to us from the General Assembly. This year, uh, without a change in the funding formula, Wayne County schools and schools across North Carolina were required to reduce, on average, the number of students in those classrooms by one. Next year will be year two of the mandate, in which we'll have to reduce, on average, by an additional three students per class. So a classroom that in the past, or a teacher who in the past might have been able to serve between 21 and 24 students will now only be able to serve, on average, between 17 and 20 students. The implications for us are, are twofold. One is the implications on personnel. Without additional funding for classroom teachers, we will have to look at reducing, um, positions allotted from other funding sources such as assistant principals, teachers in grades four through 12, school counselors, media coordinators, art, music, and PE, uh, central services, custodial services, things like that, where we get to choose how to spend the allotments that we get for that. This year, for example, we, uh, needed an additional 17 K3 classrooms across Wayne County. Those 17 additional K3 classrooms were absorbed in our existing classroom teacher allotment by, um, by increasing class sizes in grades four through eight. Okay? So, uh, the, the impact of that, uh, next year, when we have to reduce, on average, by three students per room, we are projecting a need of approximately 50 new K3 teachers if we fund, uh, and position classrooms in the traditional manner. All right? Uh, the other implication on us is our facilities. Uh, our facilities right now at the middle school and high school level are fine. We have room for the students that we serve at the middle and high school level. Elementary is a different story. When these K3 class-size mandates go into effect in earnest next year, the number of students we can place in our elementary student, uh, elementary schools in the traditional manner will go down because we can put fewer students per classroom. All right? So what that causes for us is a facilities, uh, position where we no longer have enough space to serve our students in the traditional manner of one teacher per classroom. Um, let's see. So, you know, a couple of takeaways. The K3 class-size mandate, while I think well-intended and well-intentioned to provide fewer students for teachers to work with, has some consequences that I'm not sure were intended, and that is increased class sizes in grades four through 12, uh, and then facilities issues such as not having enough classrooms potentially for every teacher to have her own classroom.
And part of that is, uh, each of you are aware, we had presented a facilities plan, um, I think it's now about a year and a half ago, that we looked zero to five years and five to 10 years. And we thought we were well-positioned with that to start decreasing the amount of modular units we have around the county. Uh, we are now counting those. Uh, we have the opportunity, we can add additional space onto the new Meadow Lane building, and also looking, as we move forward, how we can meet this mandate. And, uh, we're going to have to change our facilities planning moving forward. Our hope is, through our lobbying efforts, that the General Assembly will understand that you just don't build a school overnight. And we also know that our, um, young folks entering college programs for teacher education are down about 60 percent coming in the front door. We've seen decreases in teachers coming out of our colleges and universities, uh, going down by about 32 percent. So it's going to get tougher and tougher to get teachers as well as having the physical space of where we put the students. But we can answer any questions that any of you may have.
Yes, sir.
First question, if I'm understanding, the state funded a teacher for every 17 students.
Yes, sir.
And you all increased the number of children in a classroom to give you the positions necessary to fund the music and art and these, these others.
Yes, sir.
If they reduce that down to classroom size requirement and only allowing you to have 17 students in there, then you're going to have to give up those positions, or the county's going to have to fund those positions. Am I correct here?
Yes, sir. So what, what that was, the county, we get a funding allotment per teacher or per ADM. Um, there's a, there's a cap on that. So we were, if it's 17, we used to be able to have a cap in our state board bylaws that we could put the class size up to 22. So that's how we, we would increase those cat, class sizes a little bit so we could fund art, music, PE. In the elementary grade levels, the General Assembly requires that our teachers have to have a planning period every day when the students are in school. So we get that by sending the students. Not only is there a value of art, music, PE, and those other curricular areas, but it also enables us to program and meet the letter of the law for our schedule.
Well, there are two issues here. One is personnel, but also it's, it's actually construction. It's actually having the classrooms. And it's the first time I've heard that the state is basically pressing down on the county to actually pay for operations, uh, which is a recurring thing.
Yes, sir.
Um, which I'm extremely concerned about.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Bayless.
Mr. Chairman.
My problem is, I've been reading this plan for the past six months. And I'm trying to figure out whether you have 24 students or 17. How does that enhance the overall educational program by shifting from 24 to 17? I mean, what does that do for education?
Well, obviously, less students, a teacher every time for each of the students. If each of you recall, I guess it was about three years ago now, that the state cut our teacher assistants quite significantly. So before, in kindergarten, first, second, and third grade, for every teacher, we had a teacher assistant. They've now cut that. So the ratios, we have about one assistant for every three or four classes. And so, the issue we have on that is, we have a wide variety of learning styles with our children. And the teachers, you know, if student A needs more help, and student B, or the rest of the class is being hit their own devices. So research says, the smaller the class size, the teachers do better. But again, we're seeing now, we have children coming to school, particularly at those early ages, that are more deficient and starting further behind. So it is a challenge.
That was a two-part question. You may not want to answer this, because there might be somebody listening. Does the state, when they make these mandates, do they ever consider that it costs money and we're going to provide you with the resources before we?
I don't want to thank for any of our General Assembly folks. I do know, going back to the teacher assistant, many of them thought they funded the teacher assistant in the last budget bill. But if you read through that bill, it was a ratio they funded. And when you ran the math out, we lost positions. I think their intent is good, they're trying to help. But as most of you are aware, when it comes to building classroom space, that's, at a minimum, about a two-year project from design to moving in. I think we're very fortunate here for what the commission has done over the last few years. Our buildings, for the most part, are in pretty good shape, and we have some projects that we're moving forward. So we're much better positioned than a lot of counties. But to answer that question, I don't think they really looked at the unforeseen consequences of what their good intentions were.
Mr. Chairman.
I think Ray's first name is. Without this mandate, how many classrooms are you projecting that you need without the mandate? Say that everything stays the way it is. How many classrooms you need?
Moving forward this year, we, for next year, we wouldn't need any.
You wouldn't need any?
No, sir.
So those 50 classrooms that you're estimating is based on the legislature passing this bill with less students per classroom?
Yes, sir.
Okay? And my also understanding that the teacher assistant, on average, is one assistant for every two teachers? And if we have to, in order to meet the mandate, if it stays in place? Am I right?
We don't know if there'll be a waiver. We're hopeful, if they're going to hold firm on this, that we would have a waiver, if this is our plan to meet that mandate. I would hope we don't have to use modular classrooms. I don't know what they're going to require. So this bill came into effect, actually, last year. So if you heard a lot about House Bill 13, they granted us a one year, whereas Dr. Lewis says they reduced it by one student and gave us that one year to plan, which still wasn't enough time.
Yeah.
So we're hopeful, if they're going to hold firm, we can go in and say, this is Wayne County's plan from this point forward to meet that mandate. Our hope would be to do that plan or that waiver without modular classrooms.
Well, this could potentially, Mr. Chairman, there's one more sentence. In my view, this could potentially put a lid on what we've already done as a county. If you remember, we got 20 classrooms going up in the northern part of county, southern part of county. The goal here was, is to cut down on the number of mobile home classrooms.
Yes, sir.
This does have the potential, depending on what the mandate is, to actually add. How many mobile classrooms do we have right now? 45, 46?
Forty-six at the elementary level, about half of which could be used to help us meet this mandate, if that's what it comes to.
Okay.
The other half are being used right now for services that need a space, and we wouldn't be able to free up that space for a traditional classroom.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Martin.
Mr. Chairman.
I want to go back a moment to, you had a discussion about the loss of music, PE. And Mr. Wood, this is sort of both of your questions, because I want you to add some conclusions. If the county had to fund those positions, then would you sort of share with the, I think you made a form of some kind, that X number of teachers, we would have to share X number four, would cost what on the tax?
Right.
I think the public needs to hear that.
Okay. Well, like I said, we've been working with them on this. Their proposal is that you add the eight classrooms at Meadow Lane now, because it would be cheaper to construct them now, because they're getting ready to pour the pads and everything, so you could add those classrooms as part of that construction. The second part of their proposal is, is to build an elementary school in the southeastern part of the county. And we'll get into that in a minute. I've got the maps that show that, as to why they think it needs to be in the southeastern part of the county. Now, if you go with the 50 additional classrooms, a school that's, and if you do the elementary school, a school that size would be about $18 to $20 million, because we would have to purchase land and either install an on-site sewage treatment system, or run sewer lines to the nearest sewer collection system. And then, of course, you have to build the school itself. The state has provided funding of up to $10 million in additional lottery funds to tier-two counties beginning in two years, and we're tier-two. Tier ones will get it now. So that is predicated on the county matching that dollar-for-dollar. However, the problem is one of timing, because, and Ray alluded to that, is the mandate takes effect in seven more months. So there's a mismatch between the timing of the mandate and the funding. This deadline simply is not achievable, as it would take 2.5 years minimum to buy the land and construct the school and the sewer system. The construction contract alone for Meadow Lane Elementary is 18 months. And that doesn't include the time to find and negotiate a land purchase or design by an architect. That's just the construction time. If we had to borrow our half, our $10 million, on this project, on a 20-year bond at 3% interest, and I'm using roughly what we paid on the most recent bond issue, the annual principal would be $500,000, and the first year's interest cost would be $300,000, for a total, on the capital side, of $800,000. Even worse, and I'm getting to what you were asking now, Ed, even worse financially, we'd have to employ an additional 50 teachers. As Dr. Dunsmore said, the state's position is that they've already given us those teachers. But we use them for music and these other things. So unless we're willing to cut out those from the curriculum, we would need the 50 new teachers. I asked Dr. Dunsmore and Dr. Lewis to give me the figures on that. And roughly, salaries and benefits for each teacher would be about $60,000. So if you take $60,000 times 50 teachers, that's $3 million is the impact. In addition, you'd have operating expenses at about $278,000. Again, Dr. Dunsmore based that on a comparatively sized elementary school, which is Eastern Wayne Elementary. And their expenses were about $278,000 last year. So in total, the operating cost would be $3,278,000 annually, and the debt service payments would be $800,000 annually. So the first-year impact would be, if you're building the new school, would be $4,078,000. And to put that in perspective, one cent on the tax rate brings in about $807,000. So if you divide that into that amount of money, that would add at least 5.053 cents to the tax rate, which is a very large increase.
And the reason, Mr. Wood, that I wanted you to provide those dollars to back up Dr. Dunsmore's and their presentation is, is that the public needs to know that what the state is sending down to us has a multiplying kind of effect, because this stuff is not free. And our constituency around the county does not, I don't think, want to see us lose the music and all those things, because you've got the bands out there that's got to have music teachers, and you've got folk that's going to have to, coaches and different people who are doing things for the sports teams and all that. And when you're talking about losing those kinds of things, you're talking about the quality of life and the culture aspect of a county. So it's two things.
Apparently, the state takes the position that, you know, in the North Carolina Constitution, the state is to provide a free public education system. And apparently, the state takes the position that these, they call them, I think, supplemental programs, are not part of a basic education. And I think a lot of us would probably differ with that. And the reason that's significant is, if you take the position that those are part of a basic education, then the state, under the Constitution, should be paying for them, not local government. And I think that's been part of the problem that was addressed under the DeAndro decision. My guess is, that's probably going to get challenged again. And that's part of this whole issue of dealing with this mandate. So, but the bulk of the cost on this is not the capital, it's the operating cost. And I would argue that ought to be borne by the state. They're the ones making this mandate.
Thank you. Mr. Curley.
Yeah, I just want to thank Dr. Dunsmore and Dr. Lewis for the stiff amount of work y'all putting this and analyzing the issue and stuff. But in my humble opinion, though, and talking to members of the General Assembly, this is still a moving target. They understand there's key issues of brick and mortar and salaries that we're faced with. They understand that. But more importantly, I stress to them, is that there's a teacher shortage, you know? But I think everybody's kind of expressed themselves pretty well. But I guess my question I'd like to ask is, where, when can we expect update from the Redistrict Committee? And do you think it'll have any impact on the classroom needs?
This year, since we've put a moratorium on inter-district transfers, we've seen some changes with that. As Dr. Lewis said earlier, space-wise, we have space at our middle and our high schools. We are about to put a new roof on there to the Goldsboro Middle School, so we can repurpose that as a school. So we're pretty good space-wise there at the elementary level. And as you'll see, the chip had done some work of where our growth is. That's where we have problems. And it was mentioned, the classrooms up in the northern end, we'll be able to shift those lines accordingly to balance those schools out, including Tommy's Road and even down to Eastern Wayne Elementary. And once the new Meadow Lane is online, we can ease off some of the pressure down in the Spring Creek Elementary area. So we have a good portion of the county where we can adjust those lines. The one place where we're going to be facing some issues is down in that southeastern area where the growth is coming. And then, all of our elementary schools that we've built recently are easily expandable, that if we would down the road have to add classes, we can add classes and not get into these major building projects. So as far as our attendance line, we spent most of the day yesterday working on policies to get that in place, because moving into next year, when we bring Meadow Lane online and those classes up in the northern end, we are shifting those lines to balance those out and alleviate some of that pressure on those modulators up there, particularly at Northwest Elementary.
Well, is there ever been discussion about moving at grade level, say, fifth grade up to the middle school level, a middle school that's not completely full and then?
Right now, we have fifth grade at Greenwood, so that's an example. And we have fifth grade at.
Greenwood, Grantham Middle, Spring Creek Middle, Mount Olive Middle.
There's one more.
That might be it. They already have fifth grade there. You know, Greenwood, there are some empty classrooms. I would hesitate to go ahead and move fourth grade over there.
Right, right.
Yes. But the only other middle school right now that could absorb the fifth grade that feeds into it is Rosewood Middle. Norwayne could not absorb all of the fifth graders from that end, nor could Eastern Wayne. Dillard perhaps could. In fact, we tried fifth grade at Dillard Middle School for a number of years. We really didn't think that the services we could provide to fifth graders at Dillard Middle School met their needs. And so we moved them back to the elementary level and reconfigured Dillard as a traditional middle school, six through eight.
But Doc, since you got into that geographic area, and I've always, as old comfortable, I think about how the crow flies, you know, how far something from something else. And so it brings to mind, while you say Dillard did not work for you in that operation before, my question would be, since you have the pressure at elementary schools, what about Carver Heights and School Street? I mean, those buildings have been, you know, in place for a long time.
Carver Heights, we have space at. As we held the transfers this year, we had one of our largest kindergarten class come in at North Drive. So that's our largest class at North Drive Elementary right now, is our kindergarten. So as these students start coming up through, we need that space to house them.
We had over 220.
At Carver Heights? I'm sorry, I missed it.
It will make its way to Carver Heights. Typically, at North Drive, for the past several years, the number of kindergarteners has been between 160 and 180. This year, it was 220. So as that group makes its way through first and second grade.
I'm sorry, I missed something. I realize I missed something.
Yes, sir.
North Drive has grades.
K-2 is at North Drive.
Right, and then.
Three, five is at Carver Heights.
Correct. Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir. So as that, if, by holding the transfer policy in check and not allowing students to move into schools that are already full, that created a large kindergarten class at North Drive. If that pattern holds, and I know one year's not a pattern, but if that pattern holds, we'll need the space at Carver Heights.
At Carver Heights, still sold there.
For what's coming to them from North Drive.
Our numbers increased slightly. We went up about 100 students this year. In the last several years, it's held pretty firm.
So projecting on the roads, you don't have space at Carver Heights? Is that what I hear?
If this holds true, not in the long term, no, sir.
Yeah. As I say, this was a one-year.
Project.
You hate to make predictions based on one year.
Do you want to follow up on your question?
I have one more question, and Mr. Camart, you kind of got into part of it. Just, okay. The new policy on out-of-district transfers. Now, were the ones existing, were they grandfathered in to main? Okay.
Stop.
A number of concerns. First concern is, and I've heard this, and that is that the number of students have not expanded, basically. We've remained flat. But what the legislation is doing is requiring us to have more facilities, more classrooms with the same number of students.
Yes, sir.
So that, how do you get that? The other issue that I have, that I hear in the community, and that is that the school system is using all of the classrooms, four classrooms, that the school system, over the years, has taken classrooms and converted them over for other usage. So we want to make sure that we are effectively and maximizing the use of all of those classrooms. So it may be that you all need to take a look, and I hope you've taken a look, at how you can reconvert back those classrooms, two classrooms, to minimize the financial impact for the county. Have we done that?
We have.
The biggest one right now is the Goldsboro Middle School. The whole second floor is being used as office space. So we have a plan in place. We're moving them out of there at the end of this school year, so we will have that whole school available to us.
But at School Street, have we done that there?
We're looking at that. Our problem's going to be, there's the renovations. Because we had a project on the books, the bathrooms all need upgraded there, similar to Mount Olive Middle School. So once you get into those renovations, because of the age of those schools, we have to bring them up to code.
Well, you know, I'm always seems to be the one that has bring up really tough comments, but I'll do it. Pre-K.
Yes, sir.
Pre-K is not. Pre-K is not actually a mandated program from the state. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So, the county is not mandated to provide pre-K.
Yes, sir.
Am I correct? But we are providing the, the facility for pre-K. How many classrooms are we providing for pre-K in Wayne County?
We have eleven that are in conjunction with the Partnership for Children of Wayne County and use North Carolina pre-K funding. Uh, we have, uh, I, I think that of those eleven, there may be also some in, uh, some participation through wages, uh, particularly over the School Street site. And then, we have an additional three, I believe, that are locally funded at the School Street site.
So, around fourteen classroom?
Yes, sir.
that, ever done that, uh, we're having to make some hard choices here. I mean, the legislation is making us examine all of that. And in the mix, I think we're gonna have to look at that. If we are actually having to, to consider eliminating music teachers to pro, to have enough teachers, then I think we need to also take a look at pre-K, uh, and whether or not those classes can be housed elsewhere to free up those classrooms for Wayne County. I know that people don't like to hear that, but these are hard choices that the legislation is requiring. I just think we need to look at it.
Yes, sir. We'll have that all in our plan. I, I will say, in defense of the pre-K program, as well as the art, music, and PE, I don't wanna see anything go. I think all of us know, as we came up through the school system, you know, you look...
Believe me, I don't either, but, but I think...
PE was a favorite.
I think we need to recognize that.
And also, we're seeing a lot of our students come into our schools because of their home environments. And oftentimes, it's hard for parents to pay for preschool services and those types of things. So, yeah, the, you hit the nail on the head. These are extremely, extremely tough choices. We will get all that data together. And all we can provide is this is what we have, and this is where we need to be.
And one last comment, if I can, Mr. Chairman.
No, I will.
And that is the redistricting.
Yes, sir.
You know, I can only go by what I read in the paper and so forth. Uh, and I certainly don't want to interfere with the school board's actions and such. But it is just imperative that in looking at redistricting, you must look at the use of facilities.
Yes, sir.
That's where the meat of the cost are. And if, in fact, we have got, uh, if we needed to have two hundred classrooms, uh, and we've got two hundred classrooms, then we need to proportionally move those lines to use those two hundred classrooms, rather than going out and saying, let's build another ten here and ten there. Let's use the two hundred classroom. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Bell.
I just want to, uh, I think Mr. Dougherty knew I was gonna say something about this. Pre-K.
Yes, sir.
I just hope that we don't even consider cutting pre-K. That's a very important, uh, grade level. And I would hate to see us get into an antiquated situation where we try to compete with all the rest of the counties starting at first grade. I, I just don't think it would work. So, the arts and all that, uh, somebody needs to inform our legislators that that's a very important, uh, curriculum. I mean, I saw on TV not too long ago, and I think I've shared with you, Mr. Dunsmore, uh, students that are actively involved in the arts will test twenty-five to thirty points higher than their normal students.
Yes, sir.
So, it's gotta be important. If, I mean, you know, I, I understand that somebody learn how to play an instrument, it takes all parts of their brain in order to do that. Whereas in that, uh, some of the other things, you just use certain portions of your brain. So, we need to be aggressive in this thing. And I think you all are doing the right thing.
Mr. Carroll.
I, I just have a question, curiosity, not to be contentious. Um, whatever, and I might say anything about any of the other gentleman up here, whenever I started school, it was kindergarten. You start in first grade. And, and I remember well that, uh, PE was recess. And Dr. Lewis, you remember how Ms. Davis taught us how to color in lines? And so, that was our, our art. And, uh, when we stood up after the pledge allegiance, we sang "My Country, Tis, Tis the Day." That was our music for today. And Ms. Tilly Oliver and Ms. Davis, Ms. Wonderful Teacher, did some well with. So, when did we evolve to having special teachers for these program areas?
Well, in the elementary, you still have recess. Um,
I can't get into too much of a timeline. I'll say, by the time I came through, we were leaving our regular teacher behind to go see Ms. Towton in music and Ms. Joanne Smith for art. And, uh, I think her name was Ms. Braswell that came and took us for PE. Uh, her son was in our grade level, so I remember her. So, I'm not sure exactly how the evolution of that went. Um, I am told, and I, I had not researched, but I'm told back in the eighties, there were actually separate line items in the state budget. One for traditional classroom teachers to teach your language, arts, social studies, science, math, and another line item to cover the supplemental. I think Mr. Wood used the term supplemental classes. And then, uh, over time, there was a move to make the state budget more efficient. So, they put those lines together because it was all being used to pay teachers. But the state allotment manual that DPI publishes recognized the difference between the rate at which teachers were allotted and the class sizes they would require such that you were able to, on average, take some of those positions sort of off the top to cover what used to be a separate line item. And I think there's talk of making it a separate line item. Now, we've submitted information, uh, to the General Assembly as of the end of October, and they're gonna analyze it for all one hundred and fifteen school districts and make their decisions based on what's sent.
Well, you covered the point I wanted to get across.
Yes, sir.
And I can assure you, we, as well as the other hundred and fourteen systems across the state, are letting our legislators know this information.
Yes, sir.
And, uh, thank you, Mr. Carroll. That was, that was where I was ready to lead to the question I was ready to ask about when did this transition take place. But I would like to ask you just maybe a what-if question, cause I'm oftentimes somewhere between, uh, my colleague, Mr. Bell, and, uh, Mr. Dougherty, with their, oftentimes, their distance from each other, uh, philosophically. But what would happen? What do you think, Dr. Dunsmore? If we followed the scenario, if the scenario happened, Mr. Dougherty said, do you think that the public entrepreneurship would go back and fill in the void for that pre-K? I mean, it, and, and this is a follow-up. If the school system is getting dollars per ADM for the pre-K, would those, and you, I mean, you made a comment that the parents were not able to fund that, and that's true. Would those dollars follow that child?
We, we necessarily don't get that dollars. That goes to the North Carolina, uh, Mr. Ivy.
Yeah, the partnership.
The partnership has that, wages has that. So, depending on how they're funding, I, I can't speak to whether that would follow them or not. We provide the facility.
Oh, so, they get the dollars...
They get the operating dollars, is what he said.
They get the operating dollars, and we provide the facility. And they don't have to pay for any facilities out of those dollars?
Yes, sir. But they're, they're paying the cost of the teacher, the instructional assistant, the materials and supplies, things like that. And, and it might be worth talking with Charlie Ivy at the Partnership for Children to see what the impact would be. For example, uh, we are not the only, um, entity that houses North Carolina pre-K classrooms. There are several childcare facilities across Wayne County that also have NC pre-K classrooms embedded in their businesses.
Right.
All right? Uh, so, I think it would be worth asking Mr. Ivy to provide, to provide you with some information on what would be the impact if the school district had to sort of reclaim those eleven classrooms for, for other use. What would the impact be on his program and his ability to provide that same number or that same level of service?
Y'all won't let me come.
Yeah, hey.
We'll let you.
I, I got a question, too.
Let me, let me talk about that. Uh, then I'll get back to you guys. And then I want you to do something, too. Um, I know I'm singing to the choir, and we're all talking about music and foreign language and all that kind of thing. But don't, do, that university system require two years of foreign language to even get in?
The, yes, the, the thirteen UNC system schools require two semesters worth of foreign language for admission. So, UNC, East Carolina, A and T.
So, we didn't teach you, we, where would they go to get it, you know?
Well...
That's a good question. Um, I'm really concerned about the tax increase. And nobody wants to raise taxes. But to do this on the heels of, um, the hurricane, where our agricultural business has been heavily impacted, and they had several years of bad farming anyway, a lot of them are just hanging on. And I'm not blaming it on you guys. I, I want our folks in the General Assembly to think about this. Um, if you raise taxes at five-point-oh-five-three on a two-hundred thousand dollar house, that's not that huge an impact. It's not something I'd want to pay. But if you've got multi-million dollars' worth of equipment sitting out there, it's gonna be huge. And you gonna put, you gonna put some farmers out of business. And that really bothers me. And they, they've already contacted me, being very concerned about this, in order to make sure that everybody in the community understands that and how it will impact our business, which is the largest economic impact in this county and this state. So, I want our leaders to think twice about what they're doing here. I don't think they thought about the impact of that. I'm, I'm not complaining to you. Uh, there was another alternative that you've got, George, in your, uh, notes here.
Yes.
And if you would, whoever that, and talk about the, the other teachers that might make a difference.
Yeah, what we were looking at there is, um, this, this is a mandate for how many children per teacher, not necessarily per classroom. So, what, uh, Dr. Dunsmore and I discussed is, we feel like, um, a number of our classrooms are large enough to accommodate up to thirty students, particularly K-three, cause you know they have the smaller furniture and all of that. So, what I was looking at there as an alternative is that you would look at, we need about five hundred students under the mandate. Y'all recall from their chart, you know, that was, uh, roughly the number. A number of our lower-grade elementary school classrooms could accommodate up to thirty students. If you were to put thirty students in ten classrooms with two certified teachers in each one, then put twenty students, which is the maximum allowed, in classrooms, another ten classrooms, you would accommodate the five hundred students. The classroom of thirty students with two teachers would meet the requirements, cause it's viewed as fifteen and fifteen. Everybody follow that? Uh, it would require twenty, twenty teachers for the ten, thirty student classrooms and ten teachers for the ten, twenty student classrooms. It would require the construction of twenty new classrooms to house them. So, if you do the math on that, the thirty new teachers at sixty thousand each would cost one-point-eight million. It would take about a hundred and twenty thousand annually in operating expenses. The new classrooms, if added to existing schools, would cost about two-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand each, or four-point-five million. The debt service for that would be two-hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand annually in principal and a hundred and thirty-five annually in interest at three percent. Uh, and I should point out that if you were going to use that option, you wouldn't, you actually would cut that in half, cause we could get half of that money from the state's ten million dollar money. Uh, so, total debt service would be three-hundred-and-sixty-thousand, and operating expense would be one million, nine-hundred-and-twenty-thousand. Uh, so, the first-year impact of this scenario would be two million, two-hundred-and-eighty-thousand. And that would add at least two-point-eight-two-five cent to the tax rate. Again, if you cut the debt service in half from three-sixty to one-eighty, uh, that would take it down a little bit, but it would still be well in excess, probably two and a half cent on the tax rate. But it would be cheaper than the five cent.
Yeah. But Dunsmore, you think you could even find the teachers? And you talked about that a little while ago.
Well, that, that's, that's always gonna be a challenge. I think, as Mr. Wood and I had talked, and as you said, I, I think our responsibilities are to the taxpayers of this town. We also have to educate our children. And, you know, we wanna provide the best we can for them. Obviously, increasing those class sizes would provide a lot of challenges. And where we would put them and who we would decide if to win those classes. And it also is going to take, um, training for those teachers. They're not used to co-teaching. So, there's, there, uh, uh, that's gonna take a lot of looks, but I, as you would ask. Everything's on the table. Uh, I, I think we have to put everything on the table. And, uh, input from the community, input from our stakeholders, and move forward with what's the best decision.
I would only ask one other question about logistics. Oh, I'm sorry.
Wayne.
Yeah.
Then I can't remember where it went after that.
Yeah.
Well, everybody gets you.
Well, I, you know, I've been hanging around with Comister Dougherty for a while. So, you know, sometimes when you hang around with somebody, the way you kinda rub off on you. Uh, I'm gonna bring something up that, that you may not want to or may not can answer. But in no, we're in this discussion, as I heard, have I heard, has our behavior habits changed? Is it affecting this any, or is it strictly education? I mean, uh, when I was in school, uh, the teacher had a paddle sitting over in, in the corner. There was no behavior problems. Uh, I, I just, I just got a feeling that, that part of the reduction in class size is, and I'm not educator, but it, do we have a behavior problem that has changed in the, in the, in the last few years that could be contributing to this smaller class size mandate?
I have not heard anybody mention that as a reason.
Well, I probably don't want to go out on that.
I, I haven't heard it as a reason. I will say this from a teacher perspective. And I taught special education. Um, if you have challenging students, one, two, or three in a class, they're gonna disrupt a class of seventeen, the same as they would disrupt a class of thirty. And without the additional sets of hands and eyes in there supporting those teachers, it, it's a very difficult position to be in. But yeah, the, the rules have changed, Mr. Echoc. Yeah, there's, I grew up the same way. If I got a paddle in school, I got one when I went home.
No, I got a Killian when I got home.
Yeah. So, um, and, and I'm not saying that's the answer either. Um, we're dealing with different students now. I mean, the fact that I have kids ask me every day, why do I have to memorize this when I can pull out my phone and Google it? And they're right. I mean, when you look at how many times a day we use the telephone or computer to Google answers.
Mr. Chairman.
I think I'm gonna go, just go down the line, cause I can... First thing would be to, uh, Mr. Wood. Mr. Wood, I, I think it's, I mean, I'm gonna blow some people's mind on this one. But with looking at the impact that this would have, I think we need to explore all of our options. And one of those options that should be explored is actually looking at the quarter cent sales tax. And I think with that in mind, we need to have some information of what impact those, a, a quarter cent sales tax would do to offset some of these, these needs. So, if we could kinda have staff start to get together some information on the quarter cent sales tax and the revenues that it would generate. Now, the, the, the last item that I have is, let's forget about all of this law and the increase or the reduction in students. One thing that has come to light, and that is an overcrowding situation at Spring Creek Elementary.
Yes, sir.
And at Spring Creek Elementary, we added classrooms and removed all of the mobile classrooms.
Not all of them.
We still have mobile classrooms. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
At Spring Creek?
I believe there are eight. It's either six or eight.
Really?
Don't quote me.
I thought you took them all away. My, my question and, and my understanding is, based upon this map we're about to see, is that there was a, uh, explosion in that area. And we are anticipating even more growth of students in, at Spring Creek. Without this law, would we, in fact, be kind of, would the addition of the classrooms at Meadow Lane help in any way that overcrowding at Spring Creek Elementary?
Yeah, that borders Spring Creek. Our goal is to shift that attendance line as much as we can to ease off on Spring Creek Elementary. Would it be enough to offset the growth that's coming? I would probably defer to Chip, um, the amount of lots that are under construction down there. And, and that, it, it looks like that's not gonna stop. That, uh, Chip's the expert in that.
Well, I think what you're getting at is that if the mandate went away... We still would need the six cla, uh, the eight classrooms. Buy time there because you would have, it would, it would help you with those eight classrooms being there.
I, I think to answer your question, it, without a, a huge explosion in growth, we could shift those lines enough that it would buy us some time. Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Dougherty.
Uh, I think probably that this question may have already asked out, Dunsmore. But teacher, English teacher A, three class periods of teaching, one planning period. Are you using her space during that planning period for another teacher to come in and teach?
Typically, that only happens at the high school level. Uh, I don't know of many shared... Typically, that only happens at the high school level. I don't know of many shared classroom situations like that at the middle school level. And I don't think there's much of that going on anymore at the high school level. The last school that I remember having a big problem with that was Charles B. Acock. And since the new wing was added at Charles B. Acock, I think it alleviated the bulk of that.
But, and probably 50 teachers out there shooting for Sam, but the question though is, when you're talking about all the other things that we must look at, are we, and that's a hard one to call now, I understand that, because everyone wants their space left just like it is. But I ask that question, if it has ever worked, is that something we may have to go back to in desperate situations?
You're talking about at the elementary level?
Well...
We're already, many of our teachers and music teachers are what we call on cards. So when that teacher would go out to do her planning...
Well, that's one of them.
You would bring art or music to that classroom. So it is being used now.
There's a little of that going on now, and it would become more prevalent in the absence of space.
Mayor?
One quick question. Now, on the alternative that Mr. Wood just discussed, it looks like if we were, if the mandate stays in place, that if we go to, say, 30 students, as he did in his example, I don't see where we would, I think we would have to go to an assistant teacher for each teacher. Right now, we've got one assistant for every two teachers. I think if you increase the class size, my point is this, it's going to cost money either way.
Well, with that example, you're putting, you're not putting a teacher and an assistant in there, you're putting two teachers in there. And so you meet the formula, because you divide the 30 into by two, and you get 15 and 15, is how they view it. And then you can, you can take the max on the other, the other 10 classes up to 20. And if you add that together, if you divide that 500 students by 30 teachers, it comes out to 16.67, which meets the 17 on average per class.
Yeah, you're just doing it in a different way.
I'm doing it a different way. And let me say this, I don't know that that's an academically appropriate way. I'm just looking at it as a possibility. And that's something, that's why I'm recommending that you delay any decision on whether to build an entire new school, because number one, we need to get rid of this mandate if we can, or get it amended, and then this problem goes away, or it gets reduced. Number two is, that gives Dr. Dunsmore and Dr. Lewis time to look at that and see if that works. Now, they're doing some team teaching, I think you call it, or co-teaching now, but this would be 10 additional classrooms where you'd be doing that co-teaching. So, but my recommendation to you is that, a little bit different from theirs, you know, their initial recommendation was to go ahead with the 36, I mean, to go ahead with an additional school. My recommendation to you is, is you go ahead and approve the eight additional classrooms at Meadow Lane, but you wait on a new elementary school. And with the Meadow Lane, we would take that out of fund balance, so that would not require a tax increase. So that's one, that would be 1.4 million. You would wait on a new elementary school and study the academic viability of co-teaching 10 classrooms in order to significantly reduce the cost of this mandate, if it remains. And you'd be waiting on the state lottery funding for whatever mandate remains. I don't think you want to jump out and start building the elementary school right now, because the $10 million that would help pay for it is not going to be available for two more years. And then we have to apply for it. And then during that time, I would lobby the legislature to have this mandate either repealed, amended, or financed by the state. Because I would make the argument, as I was saying earlier, if you define what a basic education is, and you include those other areas, that really should be funded by the state, not county government. Then I would try to get additional funds in fiscal year 2019 to offset $2 million lost under the low wealth form. And then number five is lobby the legislature to change the language in the state's 19 through 21 state biennial budget to exempt Wayne County from the low wealth formula, like other counties with military bases, setting the threshold at 17,000 students rather than 23,000. And I had a paragraph in here regarding the low wealth, but I think all of you are familiar with that. The problem is, we don't meet that formula now. But we really need to get exempted from that formula. And that's the long-term solution to that. So if you can't get the additional money, $2 million in next year, I would recommend you use fund balance for that one year, which buys you time to do this lobbying with the legislature and get this low wealth formula corrected in the following budgets. And that's the long-term solution to that one. And then also lobby to try to get these mandates changed, and hopefully avoid the kind of tax increase bill that we're talking about here.
Well, really, if you don't get the low wealth taken out as well, we're going to be over seven cents in an increase.
Yeah.
That's pretty huge.
Well, let me back up on that a minute, though.
Well, you got a better, you got a better solution?
Yeah. Unfortunately, if this mandate stays and you had to take a 5% increase, we meet the low wealth.
That's true. You raised taxes five cents and you meet it. Well...
Yeah. Well, it is a moving target. Board makes a good point. Remember, he was talking about averages. So, but I think you would meet the low wealth. We just have to see that. But I'm not, I'm not recommending that. I'm recommending that we...
Maybe the second year out before you meet it.
That's right. Well, and that's the problem with it. Remember, it would be the second or third year out. And remember, they base it on the prior year's tax rate. So you might be three years out before it ever kicked in.
Yeah.
If I remember correctly, the, if we had had the same tax rate as we had in 2012 before we reduced it, we wouldn't be talking about the low wealth form.
You would have met the low wealth.
Now, that, to me, to me, to me, that is a double edged sword, because we, as elected officials, are supposed to spend taxpayer money the best we can. And we were able to call, of what this board did and other county officials, we were able to cut the tax rate and not affect our revenue. But yet, we're turning around and being penalized $2 million a year. Forgive me, I'm from the private sector, I don't understand it.
Well, Wayne County, in my view, is being unfairly penalized, because we're the only, I think I'm right in this, we're the only low wealth county in the state with a military base that isn't exempted.
That's correct.
And that's not right.
No, it's not right.
Mr. Acock, then Mr. Bill.
I'm going to shoot out the box for a minute. I had a good teacher. Meadow Lane, you say you need eight more classrooms. What's the possibility of not tearing down all of the old Meadow Lane school? I mean, that school won't even on the radar screen till Colonel Slocum come across, come around. He convinced all of us, me included, that we needed a new school at Meadow Lane. What's the possibility of not tearing all that building down? I'm just shooting out the box. I've had this question asked of me, why would we replace Meadow Lane? Well, it is, it is an old school, but it didn't, it did not deteriorate in two years to the fact, to the point that it can't be used. That's all I got to say.
Mr. Bill?
Ray Mayo, saying he don't understand the low wealth thing, I'm going to let the cat out of the bag. He and I had an hour-long presentation over at the Eastern Region, Eastern Region Office about the low wealth concept. And neither one of us spoke up at the time that they was talking about cutting the taxes, because we knew at the time that if we cut the tax where we was going, that we was going to fall below the cutoff zone. Am I right, Mr. Wayne?
Yes, sir. You're exactly correct. We were willing to take the repercussions from having a tax decrease, and that's what we're experiencing right now.
So if I, pardon me for hopping in, but if I interpret you guys right, it sounds like for these dumb old years, we've saved the tax, we've saved our citizens' tax money. We've saved them because we reduced it. And sometimes, no matter how painful it is, you have to pay back what you, if you save it one time, you have to, it doesn't stay static. Money sort of shifts. So you're saying that, oh, these years where there was a good, nice reduction, and because of that reduction, something is catching us, and now it's time to have to pay back. I guess that's what you're talking about, have to put it back in place.
Do you all mind speaking to Mr. Ives and see what kind of impact it has pre-game?
We'll take care of that. In our next summary, I'll get his input and have that for you. Yes, sir.
Mr. Bill?
Mr. Dougherty mentioned about a sales tax for school, for, you know, to get some money. I was told by some of the legislators, if you're going to do a sales tax, only gear it to schools, do not have any other things attached to it, and you can get it passed. The citizens will vote for it if you just do it for schools. But if you add 911 and all this stuff to it, they're not going to do it.
Yeah, I told Mr. Dougherty earlier, I said that yesterday, the board of commissioners on North County tabled their sales tax 4% because they have members there. But they're getting ready to vote on it. So they're not long ones that are thinking about it. So always community calls, and I can't remember what the other was, I have to go back and look at it. I saw that this morning.
What county was it?
So we're not long ones thinking about it. Is there any other questions today?
Thank you for your time. If you think of anything later, let us know.
I have a question for Mr. Dunsmore. Do I have to get a group of people out with signs saying, save my K3 or K4 or K1 or whatever?
Well, I'm not saying we're not going to need that. I can tell you, at my level, these discussions we're meeting again next week is the 115 superintendents, and to get out to Raleigh and get this information in front of our legislative body.
Good job.
Good, thank you.
Thank you, John. I appreciate that.
You'll be hearing back from us pretty soon, I'm sure.
All right, thank you.
Thank you so much. Ladies and gentlemen, if we could, I think we need a recess. I'll say five, so maybe y'all will be back at 10, right? Okay, we're back. In the 8 o'clock session, we went over the present agendas. If anybody have any questions about that, since we already covered it.
Move adoption.
We've got a motion on the floor to adopt the consent agenda. Is any discussion? Always a favorite place to raise your right hand. Thank you so much. Okay, moving on to new business. I think we've got Mr. Kevin Johnson here. He's going to come up and talk to us about Farm City Week, which you kicked it off last night with a great, successful meal and banquet.
It was. Thank you, thank you very much, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. Thank you. Yeah, we had our Farm City Week banquet last night, and I know some of y'all couldn't attend, but it was a great, a great program. Lynn Williams came out and spoke to us about all the growth and everything good that's going on down at Mount Olive Pickle. And then we inducted two new members into our Agriculture Hall of Fame, and that was Ronnie Parks, who many of y'all know, serves on the county's Agriculture Advisory Committee, and also Mr. Shelby Beeman, who passed away a few years ago from out in the Dudley area, was installed in the Hall of Fame. So it's a good program. And of course, Farm City Week is always the week of Thanksgiving, and we do our banquet the Monday before Thanksgiving. And so this year, the way the commissioners meeting worked out, I'm going to do my proclamation after the banquet. So, but anyway, if that's all right, Mr. Chairman, I'll read the proclamation. Whereas the growth and development of the county and the well-being of all citizens are dependent upon cooperation and exchange between the two essential environments of our society, farm and non-farm families. And whereas studies show agriculture and agribusiness industries together bring in over 1 billion of income into our county, which represents 21% of the county's income and 20% of the county's employment. And whereas Wayne County's farm income makes a significant contribution to the economy of our county, with over 450 million in gross farm gate sales during last year. And whereas Wayne County is the home to Mount Olive Pickle, largest pickle company in the United States, and home to Goldsboro Mill and Company, parent company to Butterball Turkey, the largest turkey producer, or largest producer of turkey products in the United States. Whereas Wayne County was recognized by Farm Futures Magazine as the fifth best, fifth best place to farm in the United States. Whereas wherever we live, on the farm or in the city, we share common needs, food for our nourishment, forest products for our shelter and paper, and fiber for clothing and other materials. And whereas if Wayne County is to continue to prosper, it is important that farm and non-farm residents appreciate and understand each other. And whereas Farm City Week provides an unparalleled experience for farm and city people to become better acquainted. Now therefore, be resolved that the Wayne County Board of Commissioners does hereby proclaim November 19th through the 25th, 2017 to be Farm City Week and a week of thankfulness.
Is a motion on the floor to accept the resolution?
Sir, move.
Okay, we have a motion in discussion. Always a favorite place to raise your right hand. Any additional comments, Kevin?
Thank you. Thank you very much for what y'all do for agriculture. I appreciate your kind words, thinking about agriculture, and of course, their impact and the implications of everything that goes on in the county does involve agriculture.
And I appreciate you bringing it to fact, next year, the Farm City Banquet will be held at the Maxwell Regional Agriculture and Convention Center.
That's right. And we're very excited about that. And of course, we mentioned the BRIC campaign, and we're excited for our festivities to be out there, and of course, our big ground, not groundbreaking, our ribbon-cutting grand opening ceremonies on March the 1st.
Thanks so much, Kevin.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, let's moving on to the contract for 8K grading. Mr. Wood?
Yes, sir. You have a memo on page 45 from Ashley Smith. She's listed the concerns about using the lowest bidder. We don't think that he meets the criteria and is not responsive to the bid for the reasons she states in there. And therefore, we're recommending you go with the lowest responsive bidder, and that's ANK grading in the amount of $364,795.45.
Is there a motion on the floor to accept?
Sir, move.
We have a motion on the floor, any discussion? Always a favorite place to raise your right hand. Thank you. Right into the next one.
Okay. And then the same memo, at the last paragraph, she's requesting that you reject part four of the bid package due to lack of funds. And we've learned that it'll be December before we have a better idea of the money that's available. So we're going to revise the scope of that work, but we want to nail down the financing first, so that we know how many streams we, you know, we can estimate we can do with that money. And we're also going to bid it such that we have some alternatives. So if it comes in higher or lower, we can match it up with the available funding at that point.
Does there a motion to reject all bids of phase four?
Sir, move.
We have a motion on the floors, any discussion?
Let me ask the question.
Go ahead.
Does that include the Noose River?
Phase four will. I don't think three does. But phase four will include some areas of the Noose. And we may or may not be able to get all of it.
Is that, is that still the snag and drag? Okay, so it's not for, the Armicore of Engineers is responsible?
Oh, that, yeah, they're talking about doing like dredging and stuff like that. I don't think we could, that's not...
No, but that does fall under the Armicore of Engineers.
Oh, yes, yes.
Okay, that's, I want to make that clear.
That's right.
Because there's certain areas of the Noose that need dredging.
Well, and they're, and they are looking at a program now. We just got notification of something on that, but we haven't gotten all the details, I think, worked out on that. Isn't that right, Chair?
Okay.
Thank you.
Any more questions or discussion? Always a favorite place to raise your right hand. Thank you. Mr. West, going to the Facilities Committee's recommendation?
Okay.
And go as deep as everybody wants to, or as shallow as everybody wants to?
Okay. Well, on 46, I gave you a memo, and as y'all know, the Facilities Committee has been working on this plan, has a blueprint for dealing with our current and immediate future needs. We've had Kendall Lee give us some rough cost... We've had Kendall Lee give us some rough cost estimates based on square footages and renovation or new construction, where we've not yet hired a professional designer to provide those. So, those numbers should be viewed as an approximation of cost, not a detailed analysis. The facilities plan itself, this document's broken into three categories. One is recent improvements, and what I wanted to do there was just to capture what we've already addressed over the last four years. And you have done a significant number of things there. I'm not going to read through all of them, but it's in the list. The second category is improvements that are in progress. And again, unless y'all want to, I wasn't planning on going through that. About a month ago, we went through all of our outstanding projects, so these would have been included in all of those. So, then we get to the meat of it, and I wanted to go through and give what you've already done, what's in the hopper, and you have to do all of that before then you can get to the third one, which is really the meat of this plan, and that is, what is left that we need to address on our facilities? So, what the committee is recommending is the following bullet points. The county needs to work with the Board of Education to develop a response to the new state mandate to reduce K3 classroom sizes. This will require adding some elementary classrooms. The estimated cost is $18 million. And of course, that's what we just spent the last 30, 45 minutes discussing. The Wayne County Development Offices, Development Authority Offices should be relocated to Wayne Community College or a similar location. It would be a more attractive introduction to the community for industrial prospects and put them near the Small Business Center as well, which is at the college. The estimated cost of that is $750,000. That's based on, I believe, $175 times 5,000 square feet. Once the WCDAs located, and it really becomes a domino effect, once you move that out, we've already discussed with the Board of Elections that they could move into the WCDAs offices, and you know, they're catty-cornered across the street. This is literally a move across the street, allowing the BOE to continue to use the Administrative Office Building overflow parking lot during elections. The Elections Board's executive director is in agreement with this move. The estimated renovation cost is $10,000. That's really ready to move in. We might do a little painting and things like that, and some minor repairs. Once the Board of Elections vacates the Administrative Office Building, it can be renovated for state probation offices. We currently house adult and juvenile probation in the Will Sullivan Building, which is county-owned, and the Perser Building, which is leased for $38,000 annually. The AOV can be renovated, then move the Sullivan Building offices in there. Excuse me. Once the Sullivan Building is vacated, it can be renovated, and the offices in the Perser Building moved into it. At that point, the Perser Building lease can be canceled, and so those annual payments there would go away. Kendall Lee has already measured all the spaces and required offices, and this should work. If by chance more space is ever needed, the AOV can be expanded into the parking lot. In addition, the county owns two lots across Spruce Street from the AOV that could be used for a parking lot as well. His estimate is $800,000 to renovate the Sullivan Building and $177,000 to renovate the AOV. The AOV is in better shape. The Will Sullivan Building kind of needs to be gutted on the inside and redone. The electric system's old, the ductwork is bad, the HVAC system's bad, so we're going to need to do more work on the Sullivan Building. That's why the difference in cost. Next one is while the Department of Social Services has moved into all six floors of the boarding building, there are still some personnel housed jointly with the Public Health Department in the county office building. Kendall is in the process of measuring the amount of space necessary to move those personnel out. Once the Maxwell Center is completed in March 2018, the existing USDA offices next to the Cooperative Extension offices will be relocated to it. The USDA building is in good repair and could be renovated for DSS offices for about $64,000. Additional space will be needed, which could be built by demolishing the existing North Carolina Cooperative Extension offices, which is the oldest of the three facilities and also non-ADA compliant, and the Wayne Center. The parking lot, lighting, and utilities are already on the site, so that building would cost about $4.5 million. The county has hired MHA Works to determine the feasibility of renovation versus new construction for the Public Health Department in the COB. If the decision to build new is made, the building can be situated within the existing parking lots, then the current building raised to provide replacement parking space. It would probably necessitate taking down the old brick house that we currently lease to the battered women's shelter. Estimated cost is between $15 and $17.5 million. The county should negotiate an agreement with the City of Goldsboro and use its proposed Herman Park Replacement Community Center as an emergency shelter. The county could provide the ATS, which is the Automatic Transfer Switch for a portable generator, and add some shower facilities. This would be our main emergency shelter with ample sleeping space in the double gym as well as shower and bathroom facilities. This is a better option than using schools, as the Board of Education needs their facilities back within a few days to resume instruction. Estimated cost is about $750,000, because part of that would be the generator. The county and the Executive Board of the Wayne County Firefighters Association have agreed to study the possibility of a joint training facility with county funding participation. It would be located at Wayne Community College, which means it would have to go through the State Construction Office. Estimated cost is $5 to $7 million. Now, I didn't put it in here, but subsequent to doing this, I've had a subsequent conversation with Kristen Hess, and she's of the opinion, having talked to somebody who's done this, that there is a way for us to get that out of state construction. So, I'm not sure if it's the method of going through the legislature yet. She didn't give me the details, but when I get those, I'll get with Boarding on that. So, obviously, if we could get it out of state construction, we all want to do that. But there may be a way, or she may be quoting the same thing we've already been given by Dr. Walker. The latest library study called for a main library, Goldsboro, and then two regional branches in the southern and northern portions of the county. The southern branch has been built in Mount Olive. At some point, the county needs to address combining the very small libraries in Pikeville and Fremont into a regional library somewhere in the northern part of the county. Estimated cost is $3.3 million if you duplicate what's in Mount Olive. If you don't do one as big, then you could reduce the cost. The reason that this is costing more than what we paid for Mount Olive is, remember, we took an existing building and renovated. This would be building from new, plus you've got to buy the land. The county should review all of its properties and determine if any should be declared surplus and sold, and I think y'all could see over the last several months, we've already started that process. You've had something being surplus almost weekly, I mean bi-weekly. And then the county should work with City of Goldsboro to put the FEMA properties near Busco Beach in one or the other's ownership so that the property can be properly maintained and leased to Busco Beach Park. And then finally, the county should look into moving the county manager, clerk's office, commissioner's chambers, finance office, and the public information office from the courthouse annex to provide needed court-related offices. This would be a new facility that should also house the staff attorney's office and the human resources department. Kendall's estimate for that facility is about $2 million. And the timing of these future projects and the order in which they are completed will be dependent on the county's financial condition in the immediate future. Now, I believe they can be accomplished in a reasonable period of time, but to the best of our knowledge, this is a comprehensive listing of what's left to be done to get our facilities up to where they ought to be.
Comments, questions?
Well, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I'm sorry, I had not seen these numbers before, these estimates. When did the numbers show up?
Well, y'all had asked when we met for me to get numbers from you, so I did.
Well, I understand. However, the numbers all of a sudden bring some questions to mind. And I would hope that we could just have another meeting of the Facilities Meeting to discuss that.
Sure.
Here's my concern. One, I had no idea we were talking about $4.5 million for the Social Services Building over there at the Wayne Center. I mean, if we're going to spend $4.5 million for the building... I thought we were just going to simply occupy an existing building, the USDA building. I didn't know we were going to spend $4.5 million there.
Well, you are going to have to add to it, and that's what we talked about.
Well, if that being the case, then we need to look at... we need to look at what our other options are, is what I'm saying. I mean, $4.5 million is a lot of money.
Well, Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Bell, first.
I hate to say it, but...
Mr. Chairman? Yes, sir.
My problem with this is that the Facility Committee meets, and they bring back a list of items and discussions that they have. You're not giving the other board members an opportunity to have a discussion, a roundtable discussion before a decision is made. You just bring it back to us, and we raise our hand and we approve. We don't see the figures. We don't see... we don't know anything about what you're going to discuss until you bring it back to the table. I think we need to go back to what we used to do before 2012, have a discussion, have a work session on this, discuss what kind of projects we need to get done, and then we let the Facility Committee put the figures to it rather than making the total decision themselves.
I recognize I opened up Pandora's Box.
No, you didn't.
Go ahead, go ahead.
But when you're looking at this figure, we were looking at 4.4, that doesn't consider, and I don't think we've looked into it yet, the possibility of getting grants for renovations of the park that we're going to renovate.
Yeah, you may get some there, and because DSS does do some for renovation, I'm in the process of checking to see if you can use that for new as well, because it could cut that price in about half if you can do new with it.
I think that will have a big effect on this whole project, is what I'm saying.
Well, I think we've asked Tammy to look into that, isn't that right?
Yeah. Okay. All right, thank you.
Well, you know, the options are... Commissioners Acock and Doughty and myself own the Facilities Committee, but more importantly, the work that Mr. Wood, Mr. Honeycutt, Carroll, Noel Woods, and Kendall has done for us, you know, the research and analysis of all the projects coming up, and the importance of all the moving parts with them. One gets done, it allows us to move some other way. And I did ask for the dollar figures to put in there because I thought it was imperative for each one of these board members to know what we're facing, and then you throw into schools to learn what they're faced with now, it could be a huge impact. At any point in time, any board member has a suggestion or comment or question about any of these things, feel free to come to any of us, but these aren't prioritized today. Hopefully, this is just a blueprint for the future, but the amount of mass money that's hindering us, it's never been our intention to cause any type of tax increase, never will be our intention to cause a tax increase, but it helps us prioritize in the future. And I hope next January, we have our Golds retreat, we start to prioritize some of these things, and we have more information. So, with that said, Mr. Chairman, I appreciate it's a lot of hard work that went in, we've worked on it since last February, I believe, so...
That's right.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, just to harp him back to something Mr. Bell said, it's not, Mr. Gerlitz, this is great work, and you serving on the committee, it's very appropriate that it will come to your mind to have somebody put these dollar figures with because if it's going to surprise you and you're on the committee, you know what kind of shock it provides to us, and we're not on the committee. So, Mr. Wood and more, Mr. Craig, in the future, I want us to consider, as John mentioned before 2012, and I wasn't here, but I'll lean on his... I defer to him to explain it, but it would appear to me that if not all of the board, a large number of the board was in the early discussions to see how it developed. For instance, y'all bring it us here, but we probably needed to have been in the discussion with Kendall to see how he decided that he would recommend to us that a certain building might be renovated or might be torn down or might be replaced. So, you see, it's all that lead-up work that leaves us in the dark, and it's not your fault, it's just that we hadn't been doing it, like John was talking about since 2012. So, yes, it will take more time, and Mr. Wood and maybe Mr. Parker, does it mean that we have to have more public... we can't meet two or three at a time to, you know, just to get information? Does it mean that we may need to have more full board meetings so that we can all be there at the same time to hear yous?
I mean, on this, I mean, this is an open book. If you want to have a work session on it, and we can have Kendall come in and discuss that if you want to do that. I think what Joe's intent, and I'm in full agreement with him, was that if you don't approve it today, I would hope you approve it, say, by the 19th of December, because our intent was is to have this blueprint so that when you went to your planning retreat in January, you knew what you were looking at there.
Second thing, I'm sorry, one quick one, the second part of this, I was hoping that I'd see at the bottom line that it told us thus and so. I mean, I didn't use the calculator. I think that would help.
Well, the reason we haven't done that is, is that what will happen there is when Craig does your next budget and your capital improvements program, he really needs your discussion on what your priorities are at that January retreat, and then he'll prepare the six-year capital improvements program, and you're not going to be able to do all of this in six years. So, he's going to have to look at what can we financially afford to do, and a large part of that is going to be, you know, trying to get some resolution to these things on schools. Because if we can get out of that mandate, and if we can get rid of this low wealth thing to where we're exempted from the low wealth formula, don't have to mess with it anymore.
Different ball.
That puts us back to square one where we thought we were going to be when we did this last bond issue, and that would take both of those problems off our plate. Then the school should be good for five or six years, then you can turn your attention to more of these things.
I was going to suggest, because I know the fifth, the agenda is completely full according to our board clerk, that we do put this in on the night, take it and have a work session, so everybody can have some input on it. But, you know, it's kind of, like I say, it's a blueprint anyway. It's not set in stone that you're going to do this, this, or any...
Yeah, and you're not signing off that you're going to do all these projects in X number of years or anything. This is just a compilation of where we think, of what we think needs to be done, and you'll decide at a later date in what order they're to be done, and a lot of that's going to be what can you reasonably afford to do. I do think it is important that you have a decision on what you're going to include in the master plan before you go to your retreat so that everything's out on the table from the county's perspective, and then hopefully you'll have more light shed on where we're going to be with the schools. And I think by your retreat also, I think we'll have a clear understanding where we're going to be with Wayne Community College. We've had an excellent meeting with Dr. Walker and Craig Folk this week, and I think we're going to be in good shape there. And if y'all recall, the recommendation there is that our Facilities Committee meeting is going to meet with them, and so hopefully we'll have some resolution to that, at least an understanding of where we're going going forward with that. And that takes care of the three big areas, which is schools to college and then your own operations.
Mr. Acock, Mr. Bell.
Yes, sir. You know, speaking of the Facilities Committee, everything that's on this list, we rely heavily on what the staff sees that we don't see, and on this list, anything on this list can be deleted or you can add new things on. In my tenure on the Facilities Committee, the Facility Committee has never voted on doing anything. We just take the information from the staff, and we compile it, and then we present it to the board. But for the Facilities Committee, we don't make decisions. I mean, we just get the facts and put them together. What did...
I mean, we, we just, we just get the facts and put them together, what the needs of the county is in the future, and presents it to this board, and in this whole board, everybody has to, has the right to vote, or make a, a change, or express their opinion.
Mr. Mayor.
I'm looking down this list, I see, I see we're talking about money. I think that's a lot of our concern. But in our retreat, at our retreat, we will know what some of these grants that are gonna be available. I think a lot of these projects are gonna be based on, do we have any grants available? We can talk about these numbers, but these numbers are, are numbers without knowing if there's any grants out there.
Well, you make a good point, Ray, because, and that's part of why you do a six-year capital improvements program, because once you know in what order you want to do, and that gives the staff lead time to go see what's out there. What can we get?
That's my point, and case in point, the Wayne County Development Alliance offices should be relocated. I can't at this point see seven-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars for this reason. If we are working with the Community College, and we are going to possibly build them a facility for one of their trades, like welding or machine shop, there should be enough room at Wayne Community College for WCDAs to be there at no charge.
Well.
Okay? So that's my point.
Well, that'll be part of that discussion.
Yeah, I, but that's, that's.
Right. And that's the kind of thing you can look at.
That's the kind of thing we do, so.
Yeah.
I don't have a problem approving this, because it is a blueprint, that's all it is.
That's all it is.
Well, maybe I owe you.
Mr. Bell.
I don't want anybody to, to take this wrong. I don't like executive committees, you know, I don't care who's running it. Executive committees have a way of, of running things. Facility committees will have a way of running things. Now, whether you like it or not, there's nobody on this board can speak for me, not as an individual commissioner, I have to speak for myself. So I'm saying that I need to know ahead of time, before all this stuff come up, what's going on. You know, I was elected individually from any of the rest of you up here, so I want an opportunity to express my dislikes and likes about any project that's going on, not some committee bringing it back to me and saying, here it is, y'all vote on it.
Well, Mr. Gerle.
I'll make a motion to table the approval of this blueprint master plan until the nineteenth, which at such time we've had staff, Kendall Lee and staff be here with a work session ahead of the approval, so I couldn't have the motion.
Based on four, any discussion? That was a paper, please raise your right hand.
Okay.
You'll do that, Mr. Clark. Okay, moving on to the authorization of the auction of vacant property to farm use three years.
Yes, what we, the reason we're asking for your approval there is, you know, we want to make what happens at the auction final. In other words, it won't be coming back to you, because whoever gives us the highest auction bid, we want to be able to say that, that bid is final, we're accepting it there. So we need your authorization to hold the auction and also to let us finalize at the highest bid on each one of our projects, which is basically what we did three years ago.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve. Based on four, any discussion? That was a paper, please raise your right hand. Thank you so much. Video. We're gonna need to go back to closed session.
Yes.
Yes.
Hello and welcome to the County Update video for November two thousand and seventeen. This video is produced by the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners each month to keep county officials informed about association activities. The NCACC Board of Directors had its first meeting under President Brenda Howerton in Dare County during October. The board took the opportunity to orient new members and to get them matched up with mentors who were veteran board members. The board heard association audit reports, financial reports, and legislative reports, as well as a review of President Howerton's presidential initiative plans. President Howerton introduced her presidential initiatives at the NCACC Annual Conference back in August. In October, she activated the Thrive Task Force, which will gather presidential initiatives that is entitled "One Hundred Counties Helping Our Children Thrive." The Thrive Task Force will be co-chaired by Wilkes County Commissioner Gary D. Levens and Beaufort County Commissioner Ed Booth, both of whom will help identify various ways for county government to make a positive impact in children's lives and to partner with local organizations to maximize their efforts. The Thrive Initiative will take its next steps forward at regional child welfare convenings on December sixth, January seventeenth, and twenty-second. For more information, visit the Presidential Initiative page on our website. Several steering committees will be meeting in the month of November. While committee members will still be a key part of policy development aspects of each committee, this year, any and all county officials interested in the subject matter covered on the steering committee are invited to attend as a guest. Please visit ncacc.org/stayingcommittees for more times and locations, or to find out how you can participate. This month, NCACC Deputy Director Patrice Rossler announced her retirement from the association after forty-two years of outstanding service. Although Rossler is retiring from the NCACC, she will continue supporting local government leaders in a new capacity and will remain an invaluable asset to the association. Starting on January first, two thousand and eighteen, she will begin a new position as the manager of elected official programming at the UNC School of Government's newly-created Center for Public Leadership and Governance. There she will work closely with locally elected officials to develop leadership training and build relationships across all levels of local government. There is a wealth of information on our website about other happenings with the NCACC. You can get a copy of our mapbook to get lots of great data. You can view information on our leadership forums on CPOD abuse, and you can read more about any of the topics we've discussed here. That wraps it up this month. Thank you for watching and allowing us to keep you updated on your association's activities. If we can help you or answer any questions, please feel free to contact us directly using the information on your screen. Thanks again for joining us, and we'll see you next month.
County managers' comments.
Mr. Chairman, in the interest of time, because we do have a number of things to go over in closed session, basically, we're just working the list of those projects I went over with you, trying to finish up as many of those as we can before my last day, and then transition over to Craig. Everything's going smoothly. We feel very good about where we are on the Maxwell Convention Center. It's actually a little bit ahead of schedule. They're doing great work out there. If y'all want to go have another tour of it, I would suggest maybe the December nineteenth meeting might be a good time for you to go, because they really are putting the finishing touches on it. We went into the Expo Arena the other day, and they've put in the ceiling tiles and everything, and it really sets it off. So that's on schedule. We have several other projects underway, as y'all know. Two things I'm trying to finish up, or three things, is the rest of these architectural and engineering contracts, so that we have those done, and I hope to get two of those completed this week.